I declare the meeting open. We don't have all councillors here at this stage. However, we have a quorum, so welcome everyone to today's Regulatory Processes Committee meeting. Please let me or Democracy Advisor Shaun know if you intend leaving the meeting. So that's to councillors. Anyone else is free to go at any stage. Councillors aren't. Morning tea will be at 10.30am, all going well. This meeting will be livestreamed, so could everybody please ensure they use their microphones when speaking? Could I ask you all to stand now to read the opening caricature which is on the screen and in your agenda? Okay, we have no apologies for this morning's meeting. I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest they may have in relation to any item on the agenda. And being done, we move on to confirmation of the minutes. I move that the Regulatory Processes Committee approve the minutes of our meeting on 4th of February 2020. They be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Oh, thank you, councillor Matthews. Put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. Okay, carried unanimously, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda. Right, public participation, we have two public participants first of all. I'd like to invite Judy Hutt and... Right, to the table, welcome to the table, this end of the table here. If you turn on your microphone, speaking to us from the Island Bay Marine Education Centre, talking about the new lease for the Wellington Marine Conservation Trust. Over to you, you have 10 minutes and allow questions within that time.
Can I speak now? Oh, okay, sorry. We did come here today to actually introduce ourselves to the new councillors and also to give you an opportunity to ask us questions about the renewal of the lease for what we call the Octopus Headquarters, which is the old Island Bay Surf Club. Also just wanted to tell you quickly a little bit about what we do. Number one, sorry, Judy and I are the founders of the Island Bay Marine Education Centre and Judy and I are trustees. I'm a chairperson of our trust and Judy is the secretary and treasurer of the trust. And all we've been trying to do for the last 24 years that we've been operating is giving everybody in the country, if we can, the chance to see what lives right outside their front door in Cook Strait, especially in Cook Strait for Wellington. And over that period of time, we've been able to see about almost a half a million people come through the centre. And right now, we see about 90,000 people a year.
Nine thousand?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Nine thousand, I got it quick sighted there. Nine thousand people a year do come to us by booking during the weekdays and then on Saturdays, we have children's birthday parties and by Sunday, we're exhausted. No, Sunday, we have the open Sunday and about 12,000 people now come just by walking in. So we're pretty busy and the facility, the old surf club and now the headquarters is integral to all of our operations. So getting a renewal at this stage is very important to us so that we could carry on the work that we've been doing for the next, hopefully, three years plus the two extension if possible. And that's what we're trying to do because we see all the, you know, of the 9,000 people that come, about 6,000 of those are the young children that come from all over the country to come to us from the schools. And it's those people, those children, who we feel are the future of New Zealand and that we're hoping that they get much smarter than my generation about what's happening in the oceans so that they'll be able to tell their grandchildren, gosh, there's a lot more life in the sea than when I was young. And that is the whole purpose of what we've been doing and we will keep doing it as long as we can.
And we think it's an absolute privilege to be able to greet all the people that take part in our programmes at the Island Bay Surf Club building. It's such a beautiful iconic building on the south coast and it really tells people where they are. They can just walk into that building, look out the window, see the Marine Reserve and want to be part of it. And when we first took over the building 14 years ago, it was in a very bad state. So we've spent a lot of time and effort getting it to what we can feel proud of. And with the input of the city council restoring the outside of the building and installing a new fire escape and a new deck, now we feel just it's a real beacon for the south coast. And so many people celebrate important occasions here like weddings and memorial services and important birthdays in addition to all the groups that we host, Aikido groups, yoga groups. It must be the most loved and looked after hall in New Zealand and we just feel so privileged to be able to use it and we hope that you'll help us continue that association. Thank you. If you've got any questions, we'd really like to hear them.
Councillor Wolf.
Yeah, thank you both for coming in and also for what you do. While we've got some time and there were no other questions, I thought that I would pose the question as to how are you getting on with the Marine Education Centre, the resource consenting and all that sort of stuff? Because we've got three new councillors today, you might like to just give us a little update on that.
That's it. Can you hear me now? Or have to push the... okay, sorry. It's the Ocean Exploration Centre project and that's a sort of 20-year project that we've been working on. And twice we've been before we're Environment Court and we've been, sorry, once in the Environment Court, twice in the resource consent and we were moving ahead perfectly when by some strange event, we lost the case for continuing to construct a new centre that would be a much larger facility but also one that would be able to be a great asset to Wellington. And when we had the court judgment, the judge of 35 years' experience almost cried because he said, "I wanted this to happen and there's nothing. This is the best project he's seen." He said unfortunately, it has to be a unanimous decision and one councillor, commissioner, sorry, not you. Commissioner was against it. Anyway, that was pretty, after eight years of work, that was pretty a heavy blow, really. And we actually thought about, oh, well, if that's going to happen, you know, we don't believe it. Why should we keep doing this if the city is not behind it? Which they were 100%. And what ended up is that the first time of the year, we usually have the groups coming about the beginning of March, the end of February and all of a sudden, this bus shows up with all these little faces of eight to 12-year-olds looking at it, you know. They're so pumped up to go into the centre that we said, "We can't quit." So we started a process again of redesigning in a different location. That was the question, that was, you know, the problem that was the, where we had. It was this decision to say we had to move to a new location. So we did find our second best location and started looking at the realities of that one and we spent about another, so far, eight years getting to the point where we are preparing the resource consent application. It hasn't been easy because, you know, after one defeat, a lot of the people who were supportive, funding Lloyd Morrison 100% and Fratell, besides all the green people in the country. So what we had to do is basically start all over again and we're at that stage now with, by the way, the help of Sam Morgan, who came with his children to say, "I'm so angry" about losing that, that you people had lost that case, that he wanted to help and he's been helping ever since. But the question is now, the location. And it's a contaminated dump site, so we've got to work around that. And that's what's being done now is getting all the information on the geotechnic work, all the types of work that you need to know about the actual location. And once we get that, we'll be having a pre-app meeting with the council and council officers and then go ahead and put in the application and see what happens. Again, it's open to the public. And we're hoping that we could have a hearing that's a little bit selective, if you want. The affected parties are, you know, just there. So we'd have to get that information out. And that's where we are, whereas, I mean, we're pretty busy, so.
Yeah, thanks for that. You guys do do a great job, you know, like, and we do traffic resolutions here and sometimes on a Sunday. No, we would never do that to you. But you do get crowds down on the south coast and it's great for our youth education. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks for saying that, mate.
Yeah, thank you very much, Judy and Victor. I'm aware that you have come and presented to us at council before and what you've had to say has been very interesting and I've said to myself, "I do need to go and see your quarters," but I have not yet done that. So it is on my bucket list, right?
Every Sunday, we're open, every Sunday from 10 till 3 and everyone here would be very, very welcome. Has anyone actually been? Yeah, I don't know, seriously. Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Maybe you could get the officers and councillors all to come at one time and then we can have like a little cocktail party at the side.
Okay, you sent us the invitation and we'll be there. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome James Hutt to the table on behalf of Corporate Cabs and speaking to Traffic Resolution TR2620 in Gray Street. Over to you, James, you have 10 minutes, allow questions within that period of time.
Hi, this is my first time here and it's a bit difficult following up something as meaningful as the Island Bay Marine Education Centre with traffic enforcement in a little DVD street. Thank you for taking the time to hear my submission. So my name is James Hutt and I'm the Wellington manager for Corporate Cabs Limited. Our organisation has a vested interest in any restrictions imposed on Gray Street. While I understand the plight of Gray Street retailers, they make up a fraction of the business activity on the street. The organisations occupying office space above the stores and the Intercontinental Hotel across the street also have commercial needs.
Excuse me, James, can you just bring the microphone closer to you?
How's that? Corporate Cabs Limited are the preferred suppliers to the Intercontinental Hotel as well as a large occupant of Optimation House across the street. Gray Street is one of the most important locations in the CBD for our business. The number of spaces where taxis are able to stop in Wellington City has been reducing and I have serious concerns as to how far restrictions will continue to grow. At present, the parks on Gray Street are available for all members of the... Provided the spaces are being paid for while in use. It is Corporate Cabs' policy for any driver occupying a car park to pay for that car park. From the inspections that we have conducted as well as feedback from Wellington City Council Parking Enforcement Team, our drivers appear to be in the minority when it comes to paying for the occupation of these car parks. Banning taxis from being able to park around the CBD when they are paying to occupy a space is a further discrimination against our industry and I don't use the term discrimination lightly. For example, I have not seen the proposal for the restriction of courier vehicles that are servicing retailers but preventing the public from being able to park or manoeuvre around Gray Street. However, I am not here today to oppose the changes or the proposed changes to Gray Street. I have witnessed the often chaotic nature of the street where vehicles are often double parked, parking on footpaths and congesting the street. The vehicles most often at fault for this are passenger service vehicles hovering like vultures looking for their next fare. But this issue is not exclusive to taxis. Private motor vehicles are often double parking while waiting for an available park and they will continue to do so even with this proposed restriction. I am primarily here today to express concerns around the wording of the restriction and its real-world application. When the Land Transport Act was amended in October of 2017, taxis ceased to have a legal status and the new term passenger service vehicle was substituted. By using the term taxi, this will not address the other passenger service vehicles that contribute to the issue, namely rideshare providers such as Uber, Ola and Zumi or shuttle vans. If a restriction is to be imposed on taxis, the same restriction must be applied to others that are providing the same service albeit under a different name. Rideshare drivers pose a significant problem on Gray Street and I do not think that anyone who's been in the area would dispute that. The double standards around regulations for traditional taxi-style operators and the lower safety and regulatory standards for rideshare drivers needs to be reined in at both central and local government levels. As such, in the interests of fairness, natural justice and for the effective enforcement of a solution, the wording of the restriction must be changed to passenger transport service restricted parking area. While I understand the wording is more convoluted, it is consistent with the Land Transport Act, will allow for more meaningful enforcement and a more realistic solution to the issue at hand. The final point of my submission is around enforcement. I am concerned that Corporate Cabs will comply with the restrictions but other organisations and individuals will not. A lack of parking enforcement will effectively result in our organisation being disadvantaged yet again for compliance. If Wellington City Council believes this restriction is necessary, then it must also dedicate the appropriate resources towards its enforcement in order to ensure that those that follow the rules are not being disadvantaged. Enforcement includes both the availability of parking enforcement officers in the area as well as training on how to better spot rideshare drivers. At present, enforcement is directed towards those of us that have traditionally complied with signage regulations as we are more visible targets. Thank you for taking the time to hear my submission.
Thank you for what I think we will agree is a very balanced, reasonable and, yeah, excellent submission. Have you afforded that to council officers already, your wording?
I provided a written submission but not in that detail but I'd be happy to submit that if you would like a copy of it.
I'd like a copy of that, please, I'm sure you would like a copy of that. Can you just commit the wording again? You said you would like the wording changed to passenger service, like there are about five words, I...
That's a few more than five, it's a bit convoluted, we didn't get to choose the name. Passenger transport service.
Yeah.
Restricted parking area instead of just taxi restricted parking area.
Right, okay, thank you. Any questions from councillors? Councillor Wolf?
Thank you for your submission, are you staying for the traffic resolutions as well?
I will stay for that.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that what you've brought forth, as the chair's said, it's a really good submission and I'm certainly hoping with the leave of the meeting that we can change that to that terminology with officer support. So, you know, it's really good that people like you come in and address us. It really is, might be your first time but hopefully it's not your last time.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I'm in favour of finding a solution for this and I do feel for the retailers. I just think that if we are implementing restrictions, that they need to be fair and balanced.
I agree with your last comment and we will be asking questions of officers when the time comes. Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much for that, James.
Thank you.
Okay, into general business, item 2.1 on our agenda, which is page seven. New lease for the Wellington Marine Conservation Trust. I'd like to invite officers Sarah Murray and Kobi Chough to the table for any questions we might have. Okay, well, I did ask the question earlier and just for the sake of councillors who may not be familiar with how these things operate. I asked the question, sometimes these leases expire and then there seems to be a period before the occupant thinks about requesting renewal, which doesn't seem to me to be the best organised. So what happens in the interim? So the occupant stays put presumably while everything's in limbo. Can you provide an answer to that?
Yeah, so that's exactly right. So when a lease term expires, the lease will go into a month-by-month term. So for all intents and purposes, things stay the same until either the lease is renewed or otherwise. So often that happens where there's either a delay in an applicant applying for a lease or where there is more information required and some back and forth between council and the applicant in order to put together an application to put in front of yourselves.
Okay, thank you, that seems to be the end of questions. So this does seem to be a very straightforward case with like, well, I don't need to say anything more. I move the motion being the recommendations and the officers' report recommendations 1 to 4. Can I have a second of the motion, please? Deputy Mayor Free, would you like to speak?
Well, I would just like to speak in support of approving this lease. There's been a long history with, as we heard, the submitters come this morning, Victor and Judy. They've worked very, very hard to provide this experience for the public. Obviously, they had much bigger plans, which they were a bit frustrated not to be able to proceed but that's life sometimes. But what they are doing is running a really valuable little community, well, I wouldn't know how you would describe it really, a marine experience, making the best use of something, the bait sheet, which actually wasn't really very well used previously and also using the local surf lifesaving club. And from what I've seen, I've been there, I've seen it's very popular. I think it's gold coin donations, it's very accessible and it's a really important part of people actually appreciating the wonderful environment that we have there without necessarily having to get into wet suits and put on snorkel masks to see it. You know, so I'm very, yeah, I'm very pleased that we're able to keep supporting them in this way and the only thing that concerns me a little bit is the lease doesn't, I mean, it has some rights for renewal but I guess my question would be, where from as a long-term solution? But we luckily don't have to quite answer that question just at this present point in time.
That's right, we're merely approving continuation of the lease. So the motion has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. Carried unanimously, thank you. Item 2.2 on your agenda, page 19. Any questions for officers on this one? Okay, I won't push the issue, it's fairly straightforward. I move the motion being the recommendations and the officers' report recommendations 1 to 4, a second, please. Councillor O'Neill, do you wish to speak? Is there any debate? Okay, we'll vote. Carried unanimously, thank you councillors, thank you officers. Item 2.3 on your agenda, page 27. Approval, well, we have three private rights away or right-of-ways depending on your point of view. Officers Carleen, Thomas and Michael was here, Michael Brownie, welcome to the table. Any questions for officers on 2.3, the first private right-of-way off Homebush Road in Kandala? Okay, there being no questions. This is a small private right-of- This is a small private right-of-way for which the name Nanda Way has been proposed. I move the motion, recommendations and officer's report. Seconder, please, councillor Conde, do you wish to speak? No, okay, we shall vote. Well, any debate? No, we shall vote on it. Okay, carried unanimously, thank you. Item 24, page 31 of your agenda, private right-of-way off Avana Rise Granada Village. Any questions on this? Can, just the pronunciation of this, is this Sabah?
Correct.
Right, thank you. Right, we'll crack on, as they say. Another small private right-of-way for which the name Sabah Way has been proposed. Seconder, please. Well, I'm moving the recommendation and the officer's report. Seconders, councillor O'Neill, thank you. Do you wish to speak? No, okay, any debate? Well, let's vote on it. Carried unanimously. Item 25, page 35 of your agenda, private right-of-way off Hira Road, Brooklyn. Questions? There may be a question or two on this one. Councillor Matthews, I'm sure you have a question.
As well. So yes, I mean, as I've discussed with you, I'm interested in the recommendation not to proceed with one of the initial recommendations from our Tera Potama team. And I'm just wondering if you could just outline some of those safety concerns regarding the calling, not calling the street Ararua Kai as per one of the original recommendations from that team.
Absolutely. As set out in the report, the primary reason for not recommending Ara Ruakai is the potential for confusion for emergency services and the very real possibility that a tragedy could potentially result if we proceed with a name Ara Ruakai versus Awaruwa. Very sounds very similar.
What is the threshold for making those decisions around similar sounding names? I'm just interested in, you know, how we make that judgment.
So in the road naming policy, names that sound similar are to be avoided, and this is in line with addressing standards. Having worked on the ambulance 111 calls myself, I'm very cognisant of that potential for confusion where names sound similar.
So I note that the name Ara Tuna was rejected because there was a tuna terrorist in Porarua, which is not actually our city. And that seems a pretty high threshold for rejecting, you know, a pretty low threshold or whatever. It seems to me odd to reject the name on that basis when it's in a different city, when you think of how many Victoria streets and, you know, Clyde streets and other streets there are throughout New Zealand. So why is it so significant that we can't have Ara Tuna?
So historically, there, you're correct, there has been repetition of names within regions, and this is something we're moving away from in line with the addressing standard. Again, I have a personal experience with call-taking for our emergency services. You know, that's a centralised function. And I did have the experience of sending an ambulance to the same named street in another town in the same region. So I can only emphasise that we continue to ensure that names sound and are unique as far as possible. I will accept that.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll just make a comment. I drove in this morning on the motorway quite early, wasn't stuck in traffic fortunately. And I said, I repeated to myself several times Ara Ruakai Ruakai Way. And I decided at the time I could actually live with either. And but I would listen to what officers had to say on this. And I did speak to Carleen before this meeting, and I said, how strong are you on this? Because sometimes there's a wee bit of a room for manoeuvring. And well, she said we're very strong on this, and she's outlined the reasons why. And I think councillors don't do as defer to officers. And on this occasion, I think because of their breadth of experience, I am prepared to do so on this occasion. They have had many years' experience in terms of distinguishing one street name or understanding the importance of distinguishing one street name from another in terms of enabling wayfinding, et cetera, et cetera. So on that basis, I trust their judgement. I'm sure there will be other occasions we can use the word Ara, and it will be appropriate to do so. I don't... Okay, yeah, yeah.
I was just interested because the, about the, just ongoing in future, looking at using Terewhar Maori names, which we want to do more of. And that both of these names were proposed to have Ara at the beginning of the name. And interested, have we done some thinking inside the organisation about how we're going to deal with that? If this is going to be an ongoing issue with similar sounding names, how are we going to kind of reconcile those two competing pressures?
So each occasion is considered on its merits. So on this occasion, it was felt not appropriate for some very good reasons to use the term Ara. In many other occasions, it will be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I move the motion, recommendations and officer's report. Seconder, please, councillor Conde, any debate at this point? Councillor Matthews.
Kia ora colleagues. I have been dissuaded from moving an amendment on the basis of safety. I was interested in pursuing the name Ara Ruakai for the street on the basis of that being the original name from a recommended, one of the original recommendations from our Ewi partnerships team. I'm on Awaruwa Street every day. That's where my train station is, basically. So that's, I'm, you know, used to that name, and I don't find the two names confusing. I'm not convinced about that. But, you know, and I also think it's important in a week where we are almost certainly going to correct the spelling of Te Whare Podi Street, that we do need to sort of think very carefully about how we can use more Terewhar. And I guess I'm concerned that there isn't a higher bar set for Terewhar place names than there is for English and other languages on the basis that they are confusing. Because I think that if we change these names or use more Terewhar names, that will improve our understanding, our pronunciation, and minimise confusion. So while I have been convinced not to move an amendment, I'm not convinced that these two place names are as confusing as all that.
So just very quickly, I am persuaded by the arguments around health and safety and needing to be really clear when you give directions to people where to get to. I've actually had personal experience of having an address which is pretty confusing, and people regularly tune up to the place that looks like you should be able to get to a house, but you can't. And we actually did change our address. So it is quite important to have clear, unambiguous addresses. So I think I'm happy to support the officer's recommendations now I understand some of the reasoning behind it.
Councillor O'Neill.
Yeah, just quickly to speak to this as well and acknowledge the work that's been done in terms of the hierarchy and obviously a very well-respected policy, which has gone through quite a few recent changes. Similar to councillor Matthews' point, I hope that in the future, when we are considering particular theme names for different suburbs or understanding and implementing the appropriate significant place names of these areas, that we do give a lot more respect and do lift up the same names that the Ewi partnerships team have suggested as well. I acknowledge that in the report as well. It's not always the most popular decision to implement a Terewhar Maori name, but in the same way that we will often find ourselves with two very similar sounding words to the pakiha ear. It might mean completely different things, and that significance might be really important. So I hope in future, when we talk about these issues as well, that we're doing it with the best pronunciation possible at our toolset and that moving forward, we hope to bridge a bit more understanding around that because it is very significant as well. But yeah, thank you both, yeah.
Thank you. I move the motion, which has been, put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Thank you, carried unanimously. Thank you, Carleen Michael. Okay, traffic resolutions. We're still hoping to have a break at 10:30 and be done with traffic resolutions before 1 o'clock. Okay, page 41 to 190 of your agenda.
We're going electronics, so you might have to bear with us.
Welcome Sean, Stephen and Charles to the table. I'm sure we have a few questions, so who's going to go first? Because I have a few. Okay, we're not all championing at the bit. Deputy Mayor Free.
Look, I'm really sorry I've been so busy. I haven't really given these the attention they probably should have had. But I have had just a late email in from a resident of Neve Road, raises some concerns about the dotted yellow lines. He, obviously everyone has their own individual view. He'd have preferred them in a different, it's TR... Yeah, TR 3820. We're just suggesting, actually, or the officers are suggesting, a very small section of dotted yellow lines, which would only take one kapaa. I think he had a different view about what the best solution was. I think the main thing I'd like to be able to say to him is, because I'm minded to probably support this, is that supposing there is a need for a more complete look at the street, that this would not necessarily be something that couldn't be reviewed, you know, in the light of maybe a more extensive scheme.
Absolutely. So just by putting these down doesn't mean that we're not going to be visiting and actually look at these streets in a bit more of a systematic way, which we're planning to do, yeah.
I'm happy enough with that. Thank you very much.
Could I add to that? Interestingly enough, this driveway serves, I think, six properties. It's sort of a, still a low-volume driveway. It's actually on the left-hand side as you come up the drive, and all cars come up in the forward direction. On the left-hand side, within about six to eight metres, there's actually a bus stop. So what we are looking to do here is actually to provide improved access to that bus stop. Currently, cars park in there. I've seen that on just the one occasion I've been there recently. And so public transport, there's up to about 40 passengers getting on or getting off that bus stop. We really want to get the buses right into the left-hand side. So that's why we've gone for this. Parking demand in the street is really high. We've been probably in Neve Street on three or four occasions in the last two or three years I've been here. And so it's very selective, but I still think we should go ahead with this. But the challenge is, if we take more parking away, they may park in a more difficult location and safe location.
I completely understand what you're saying. I think the reality of it is we're going to need a lot more dotted yellow lines and a lot more streets.
Councillor O'Neill.
Yeah, thank you. My question is around the same part of the paper. My question is around when we look at implementing, and you'll bear with me for a second, when we look at implementing yellow lines on behalf of a particular resident, what concerns do we pay to the amount of on-street or off-street parking in that space? And do we consider different accessibility options as well? If we don't hear it through the public feedback, are there other modes of assessing? Yeah, could you talk through the way that you decide that?
Yeah, we do look obviously for a balanced outcome. This particular driveway is quite steep, and so to the right, there is some probably limitation on the sight distance, but we have a lot of driveways of similar nature around the city. The actual rules that we have actually provide for a safe stopping sight distance for vehicles actually on the road to sight a vehicle exiting a driveway. And in this case, I believe there is 30 to 40 metres to the right. So it's on the onus of the vehicle on the main route to sight a vehicle exiting and slow down. It's not perfect, it's not a perfect situation. So the parking demand, obviously, we put this forward to see what the reaction would be from the public in the area. And they've come back with quite significant opposition to the loss of any parking because of the high parking demand.
I will ask a question now. I don't know whether standing orders state that the chair has to ask questions last, but I will button at this point. And ask about, I have two different ones. We'll come to Gray Street shortly. But Kawe Street and Nio, we had more objections to that, I think, than any of the others. Well, there were four. We're not talking about big numbers, but there was four strong objections. And my understanding is that, and I can't understand where those people are coming from, but we've got to make some adjustments in terms of moving the spaces and altering the time limits. I believe that there is going to be some new parking on the other side of the road. That's going to come to us in May. Is there any reason why we can't defer traffic resolution 1120 Kawe Street, Nio, until then so that there's some relief for the businesses there that would be affected by, if we take away the parking of reality too much at the moment, it will affect, I mean, these cornered areas, it's important that they have parking. And can we not wait till May before we put this one through, is my question?
I'm not sure the stage of the development.
I think, given, yeah, so this is to facilitate development there to actually enable driveways into the new housing development, which would need to, if we were to put this on hold, it could potentially impact that. So there could be ramifications there. I think our preference would be to go through this time, and we will try and push to get it in. We're too late for April, aren't we? But we will get it into May, and I think we give that undertaking. We'll check on the timing of the development. We'll check on the timing of the development. So if it can bear waiting, we won't actually implement this change until it's required. Does that make sense? So for instance, if the development can do without this accessway in the meantime, for the next couple of months, we can defer it and do all of the work at the same time. But I think it would be better to approve this traffic resolution today.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that. That would be a good compromise. Thank you. Plaid Cymru Matthews.
Yes, so my question is about, I have to put my glasses on. Page 182, this is about the mobility parks in Hanson Street. And I've just sort of got a general question really about, I've obviously got a passion. Oh, the number, where is the number? 5120. That, so just sort of for my, to build my knowledge around how changes are made with mobility parking. There was, it notes that council has been advised that that mobility park is no longer required. So I'm sort of checking how, you know, do we initiate mobility parks for a resident that is, you know, expresses the need? How do we, how are we informed that that change is, that the person has moved or, you know, the change is required? And also do we monitor the usage of that car park before we change it from a mobility park? Yeah, just making sure that it's not used by people with mobility needs.
A mobility user will approach us through our confirm inquiry and ask for a mobility park. We'll go out and survey, have they got accessible parking on their site? We'll obviously have to check their certification for mobility parking as a mobility user. And then we identify if there's a place that's level within our parking guidelines. We do not want to put a mobility space in that on a grade. So we're looking for a fairly level space, less than probably about eight to ten per cent longitudinally and similarly crossful. So we go out and we talk and we identify if there's a suitable location. And then we go through this process to see if there's, obviously that's a formal consultation process. For the removal of a space, we're quite dependent on those people that live adjacent to the site to inform us. These people have moved out, the mobility user has now gone. So we haven't got a monitoring, ongoing monitoring process if the person is still there or has moved out. We're reliant on the adjacent residents, which is reasonable because they are the ones thinking, oh, this space is no longer used. We would like to use it.
Okay, back to Gray Street. I had a question initially, I've got a couple of questions on this. And one of them was, before we heard the presentation this morning, how would taxis, would there be signage to say taxis can't park here? Because if they, can a taxi, like a regular car, park there, feed the meter for as long as necessary? I mean, could they be doing that legitimately anyway? Or would they be banned from doing that if this resolution was to go through in its current format?
Yeah, we've got a situation currently in Mercer Street between Wallace and Wakefield where there's a lot of P dollar spaces, paid parking spaces, loading zone and the taxis do populate that area. Because there's a taxi stand directly opposite on the left-hand side of Mercer as you go down. So we've got a taxi restricted parking zone there. We've actually probably got, I think, six to eight parking zones of this similar nature throughout the CBD to limit the taxi overspill into other parking areas, paid parking areas.
So I think in answer, they wouldn't be allowed to use the metered parking spaces. This is a taxi restricted area.
Is there a sign, would there be signage to that effect?
Yes.
Right.
Yep. So on the traffic resolution, I think it has the sign there. Does it have the sign that we use? No, it doesn't have the sign we use. So no, it's a taxi restricted sign that we use. And we have other areas across the city.
The sign is quite emphatic. It's got a red border. It's got, I think it's red on, red words on a white-black ground with a red border. So it looks rectatory, it looks a legal sign. In this case, James has raised a relevant point about the PSVs. The rule that came out in 2017, all passenger service vehicles should realise they now are in that sort of same category as a taxi. So we could, I need to talk to NZTA about a supplementary sign to the current signage we have that could have the wording like includes, you know, all PSVs. That would be an information sign. But I need some qualification from NZTA on that wording of that supplementary sign.
Should we defer putting this through until that time or...
No, so the current regulations define taxis as including all small passenger vehicles. So that change was made in 2017. So I think we're still within our, we should still probably proceed with this traffic resolution as a taxi restricted zone. That supplementary sign will just make it clearer to those. But the other thing we need to do is also just make it clear that our enforcement, parking enforcement officers know that taxis, actually that definition is much broader than just taxis with the signage of taxi on it. So that's going to be, that's going to help in terms of enforcement. Does that make sense?
We'll come to you in just a moment, councillor Wolf. But okay, when the likes of this goes through, do our parking enforcement people, are they made aware of the change there so that they can actively monitor it?
Yes, yes.
Because again, I am very sympathetic to the point of view that when a rule is made, those who flout it, get away with it, well, not get away with it, but those who are law-abiding are penalised if the law isn't enforced. And those, yeah, you know what I'm saying.
Yep.
Okay, councillor Wolf.
Yeah, I'd just like some clarity on that if we were to say in principle that we agreed with the public transport service restricted parking area. Charles, you could go to NZTA and that, all those signs in all those areas would be consistent.
Yes.
Not just...
Oh yeah, if we made that change, we would change the signage in all areas.
Yeah, but I think, you know, you can't have lots of different signs around. And secondly, if you're just calling it a taxi, you will have trouble in the courts enforcing it.
Well, no, because it's a legal definition under the Land Transport Act.
I can just see the ambiguity. You know, we go one way or the other. It's public, you know, the term NZT, the NZTA should go with this term, shouldn't they?
Obviously as a small passenger vehicle.
Yep, absolutely. Because otherwise, yeah. So can we move that sort of pro forma on the basis that...
What I would suggest, based on the recommendations of the officer, given that that is the legal definition that as we understand it for the legislation, we would leave it at that. But we would seek the confirmation from NZTA that from a legal perspective that can be enforced and that the way we present our signage is enforceable.
So you will, one of you, Charles, you'll get back to us once you've had the conversation with NZTA to let us know that...
Yes, certainly, yes.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Any more questions whatsoever on traffic resolutions? I shouldn't drag this out. I'm quite happy if there's not.
Yeah, I think that's under control. So, do you want me to speak to it or have we almost agreed? I think we've agreed.
If you have a question, we have the opportunity for debate.
No, I don't have a question. I think we've agreed to withdraw it and reconsider it along with Beecham Street as a more complete solution.
Okay, well, I'm reasonably comfortable now with the ones we have discussed. Parra Street, Kawe Street, Gray Street. I think that's all. So everything is straightforward in terms of... You can if you wish.
Okay. So I'm going to move the paper, but before I do that, I would like the leave of the meeting to adjust the recommendations. So under recommendation two, item X, TR 4820, Parra Street, near 44 New Bus Stop. With the leave of the meeting, I would like to delete that from the recommendations. Thank you. All right, in that case, I'm happy to move all the recommendations that we have in front of us. Thank you, officers, for all the work that you've done on this and for your response in this to all the questions that we have following up and finding some compromises for us. We really appreciate that. Let's not drag this out. Sorry, yes, perfectly reasonable. So we're removing Parra Street so that we can, it's about a bus stop and we're not sure that it's in the right place. And we would like to talk to Greater Wellington a bit more about whether that's the place it should be. We have a number of other traffic resolutions around bus stops in other parts of the city that we've also withdrawn so that we can work through with Greater Wellington about those as well. So we just have a little bit of a process we're trying to smooth out about how we smooth out the bus stops and traffic resolutions where the organisations are working together on those.
You have second. So any debate? Okay, let's vote.
I would just, I don't normally take time to thank officers. I'm probably a bit negligent there. But there's a huge amount of work that does go into these. And I think the fact that we only generally receive a small number of submissions and often they're positive as well as negative is actually really a testament to the fact that our officers do work so hard to try and get it right. And I'm looking forward, we do need another bus stop in Parra Street and I'm looking forward, and Beecham Street, we need to look at that. But I'm looking forward to actually looking, working closely with you guys to come up with a really comprehensive solution for those streets that we can confidently approve.
Okay, we shall vote. Thank you. It is right on 10:30. I'd like to get the meeting finished, but I... The next two items could be very quick, but there again, does anybody have any real issues on the remaining two items? Because we shall make our decision on the basis of how long we like to be as to whether we have morning tea right now. Okay. Yeah, right, item 27 on your agenda, proposed road stopping and land exchange five Tarawta Harris Tarawta. Page 191 of your agenda, officers John and Sarah Jane still. Any questions for officers on this one? It's, I'm going to remind you, it's very straightforward. It's councillor Conde's home turf. Not that she has any interest in the matter. Okay, we don't have any questions. I won't push the issue. So I move the motion being the recommendations in the officer's report. Second for the motion, please. Councillor Conde, thank you. Any debate? Okay, let us vote. Carrie Unanue, thank you. Now we can have morning tea.
Do we get to join you for morning tea, saying...
Yes, yeah. We appreciate the efforts that officers put into things behind the scenes. Get the show on the road again, but we're just waiting for Shaun to reconvene at whatever time it is, 10.43. We, we've just one item left on the agenda, it is public excluded, so officers recommend the public is excluded from the following part of the proceedings of this meeting, we don't exactly have too many public here at this stage, I move, seconded please, going into PE, I saw Councilor Conde's hand first, any debate? Right, my motion's been moved and seconded, vote on the PE. Thank you, carried, so item, the last item on the agenda is proposed.